Well, there are two of us.
Do you um, do you see my desktop?
I can see what you have up, yeah.
Yeah, okay, good.
I can see the agenda, I can see the minutes.
Well, we got five minutes.
Yeah, I would hope some of this will.
It's hard to have a meeting.
Yeah.
I don't want to change the layout of you, it wants me to hit okay. How do I stop that? How do I turn that off?
Just say okay. Hi Jim.
All right. Two more minutes. Welcome Jim.
Now we got five now.
Yeah, we do. I suppose we can start the meeting. I don't, well, my clock says 6:59. We'll wait, we'll wait a minute.
That's what mine says too. We haven't seen Ray yet.
No, I haven't seen Ray and I haven't seen Bill.
Stan or Bill or Terry. Or my neighbor.
There's Terry, I believe.
You have to tell me, I can't. I have to scroll over. Yeah, it looks like Terry. Yep, all right. All right, let me, I'm just trying to keep track of my roster here.
All right, I got seven o'clock. I think we're gonna start. I was hoping Ray can connect because I've got some questions for him. Okay, so I'm gonna call to order the ledged Water Pollution Control Authority meeting. Seven o'clock on September 22nd, 2020.
Give me about thirty seconds to get the roll called on on my.
Okay, yeah. Call Ed Lynch, Tony Capone, Jerry Jones, Sharon Wadecki, Jim Ball, Jeremy Norris, and Stan.
Hello.
Okay, Stan's here. I'm switching back and forth between screen and screen, so I. Hold on a second here, I just need to see yours. All right, give me thirty seconds, so we have Ed, Terry, Sharon, Stan, and Jim will be the voters tonight, I think.
Yes.
That's not right. Okay, let me get, I've gotta do that, and then I'll be ready to go.
Stan's in the Caribbean.
Yeah. Ah, much warmer.
Hope he realizes he's got to quarantine when he comes back.
Maybe I'm quarantined from there.
All right, so, all right, I'm almost ready. Somebody's going to. Just be sure I'm good. Okay, I should be good, go ahead.
All right, so I don't see any residents or property owners. So, excuse me, I'm gonna shut off all my phones.
What the hell's going on here?
Okay, so. We have a review and approval of the minutes. I'm sharing my. My screen here to show you what's in the minutes. And you can take a look at it briefly, and if there's any corrections or disagreements.
I'm hoping the minutes be approved.
It's been moved by Sharon and seconded by Terry?
Yes.
All right. Are there any discussions? Hearing none, all those. And all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed. Hearing none, it's unanimous. Okay. And I move down to communications. I wish Ray were here. The only. See, this is the laboratory that's standard, although they are gonna, they're gonna be opening up copper and lead testing. Looks like Gail's very legend center are still in compliance. The Gail's very tank, I did review the design. And I had, I sent Ray one question. And that question was, there's a pipe underneath the Gallup Hill Road, and I'm kinda questioning whether we need to dig up the road to pull that pipe. If everything is sealed off, they are not replacing the piping that's in the, underneath the land there going to the tank, so I, they're not pulling it. So I don't know why we have to pull the pipe underneath the road. Save Steve Maslin a headache, as you know, when we dig up the road, it never, it's never. And I'm not really sure when they're gonna resurface Gallup Hill, so that would be another question. Otherwise, it looked good. The quote looked pretty good to tear all that out. Let's see, the next is the, there's no, there's no, there's no service correspondence other than I have been communicating with Tina. They are fully bonded. My only question is, I don't, they haven't told me what the bond limit they have. They have not gotten back to me on that, so. I'm sorry to say that we haven't pulled, I've told them that where we want them to go ahead and do it and save us the nine hundred dollars, the brink. The brink cost, but I was hoping to get a bonding number. I haven't gotten yet. Agent report. Tony, could you mute your?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. I'm busy typing.
Yeah, we can hear it pounding away.
We can tell.
Minutes kicked me out, so I had to get back.
All right, so I'm looking at the. The agent report trend, it looks like we're slipping a little bit in payments. You can see the August thirty days up about. Six thousand dollars overdue, although the thirty-one to sixty is same. And it looks like the sixty-one to ninety days going up, it went up a hundred percent, it went up four thousand dollars. So, and then we have actually a little bit going up on the hundred and twenty, so I'm not really sure if this is related to the pandemic, people not able to pay their bills. But it's something to be a little bit concerned about. Revenue, revenue for August was a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, which is a drop from a hundred and forty-four thousand last month. So we're getting a little bit of a trend here I'm not very happy with. And I'm not sure when, when we're gonna pull. The penalty clause on the pandemic, we really haven't discussed that. I was asked by Tina, and I told her, oh, I guess we're still in it, so. And we did make a resolution to say that we weren't going to. Penalize people for late payments. So it's something to keep an eye on. They wanted, yes. Go ahead.
When we discussed that, one of the things that was requested that if people were late, that they had to come up with a payment plan.
That's right. Yep.
The question is, do we have payment plans in place?
Yes, we do.
I mean, for all of these?
On that, I have to, I have to get a number, but as far as I know. Yeah, I'll have to get a number from Tina, because as far as I know, they have been doing payment plans, but I don't know how many. And I'll, I'll ask Tina. If she can give me a number. The only thing I wanna point out of the budget is. It looks like based on the water usage, because it's a drought, we are, we are selling more water. I don't know. If you divide these numbers by twelve. And then look at the two month here, it looks like we're about three thousand dollars more a month in water. It's an approximation. So, again, our budget for next year is gonna do the same thing that we had this year where we have a surplus. So going to that question surplus, Ian says that it's just unspecified funds that go, that sit there until we ask for them. You know, they don't go anywhere. So I don't know. Yeah, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, did you find out where they were going to? I know you had asked about it.
Yeah, I did, and it goes into, let's see, and actually, I think in the minutes, we actually said, let me go back to the minutes. So. The surplus at the end of the year goes to the town's general fund. And, no, it goes to, not the town general fund, it goes to the WPCA. On, you know, just, it's a, it's a surplus of money.
But we had asked if there was an accounting somewhere of what that total is.
Right, and I, the email I got, I can actually share it with you, is that, well, it's, we. We asked for that money, and as long as we have it, they give it to us. I. I don't have a number. Now, I did ask Ian to supply that spreadsheet. He said he was gonna do it, but I haven't seen it. I don't know what the story is there. I did send it.
And this, as Terry, I'd like to reiterate the request for the management report that we want, and also for a fund balance report.
Yeah, I'm gonna bring up, actually, I wanna bring up the email that I actually sent Ian. Hold on a second. I'm gonna go to this, my sent mail here. I. I know I asked him to do what you just said. Yeah, here it, Ian. So, let me, I need to get this out of the way. So what I said, I sent this email, I don't think I got a response from him. It's the town email, it's loading right now, it's gonna just take a minute. All right. I said, as we recall last year, you had presented to the commission as an example of the year in Excel spreadsheet that we had looked at and thought. Was very productive for us to understand the water sewer budget state. Can you reproduce it for our review? Like, that was my question to him. Never got a response. So I guess I'll have to resubmit this and find out. Why we're not getting any, anything there. Okay, so, let me go back to my, maybe I missed it, maybe go back to my inbox here. Did Ian respond? All right, Bill Soms is having computer problems. That's why he's not joining us. Yeah, there's a. There's no response from me. Wait a minute, what do we got here? So, here's what Ian says, any kind of gain or loss at the end of the year ends up flowing into a fund balance. The commission can decide to earmark that extra money for CNR, though it, it ultimately, if, ultimately revenues exceed expenditures at the end of the year. I can increase the CNR contribution out of the operating budget. Okay, so that's, that's his response to that. Kind of open-ended.
But we have no idea what the fund balance is.
No, we don't. You know, my question, he responded to my email when I said, if I understand this correctly, the commissions would have to vote on any excess water funds to go to the CNR. Otherwise, they sit in a separate financial line item. I have question marks on all those statements. Is there any way at fiscal year end to know what was excess or what is deficit?
Right.
And that was his response. Uh, no, that was not his response. He did not respond to that. I'm looking at the dates. So I, I'm probably gonna have to sit down with him. I don't know why we're not getting answers to our questions here. So, sorry. All right. So we don't. Go ahead.
For the minutes from last one, we, of last month, it says the surplus at the end of the year goes, does go into the town general fund, and then has to be transferred into the WPCA account. So it requires activity at some, by somebody. That's what it says. That may, that may not be true.
That may not be true, and so I don't, I don't have a confirmation of that statement, and I don't, from Ian's comment, it looks like we do have to do something. Let me just give you an example. Okay, so it'll be in the new business. We're looking at getting a engineering study for a waste treatment line to, from Ledged Center to the Highlands. The town allocated in their, in their capital budget fifteen thousand dollars. I already know that's not enough money. We're probably gonna spend thirty thousand, maybe even thirty-five thousand for an engineering study. So what I would do is, an example, is I'd go to Ian and say, well, the other twenty-five thousand should come from our surplus. I just throw it at him. You know, our commissioner has voted on it, they said yes, but you're right, I don't know what, what's, how much is in there. So I guess the saga continues.
They must have just closed out the annual audit, so we should have a figure for the end of the last fiscal year.
I would think so.
No, they may not have closed the audit out yet. Sometimes it's not complete until December. They should have closed the fiscal year out, but they haven't finished auditing yet.
So it's my, we won't get that number until maybe December, okay?
But Ian did give us that spreadsheet last year and said he'd be able to provide it when they closed the year, and they closed the year usually sometime in August, but I'd give him, you know, a few weeks after that. But he's, they've closed the year, they just haven't had it finished being audited.
Okay.
So did the commission see last, last year, how much money was, was left over, or?
No.
No.
The only place you can find it is actually in the town's audit, and if you wanna read the audit. Have a go at it. It's a lot of pages, but the number is in there because they, they have to tie it all out at the end of the year, so I don't know why Ian couldn't provide you at least some number.
And if we need additional help, our liaison member to the town council happens to be the finance chair. Certainly Bill Soms, certainly Bill Soms could help us with this.
Yeah, I agree. I think I'm gonna have to have some kind of joint call between Bill and Ian and myself to kinda pull this out.
Let's ask for Marsha Hancock's help if we need to.
Right.
I hate to go above, I don't wanna go over Ian's head until he's had a chance to respond, but we have asked for information, management information a number of times.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I didn't even look at this, but I've just shared with you, that, that email was sent on August twenty-fourth. So it's been a month. I have not received a response, so. I. We'll push this some more, and we may have to go to Marsha, I don't know. Okay. I hate to belabor this, but we, it's been frustrating. We really, it's hard to manage the budget when we don't know. What kind of monies we have.
Not only that, we pay half of Ian's salary because he's supposed to provide half of his time and services to the WPCA.
Yeah, I forgot how much we pay. We pay what, forty thousand? I forgot. Yeah, it's about forty thousand a year, forty-four, so that's a lot of money, not to be. I forgot about that. Yeah, it's not so good. All right, so the, back to the sewer budget, I don't see any big alarms. The electrical is. Let me see, the electrical looks like it's going the same way as it has every, where is it? No, that's not it. Sorry, I'm looking, I had it a minute ago. The only thing we have to watch out for is the electrical. There it is, right there, it's this line. There is no report from Steve, but I did call him today, everything's running smoothly. Everything's running fine. Steve's dad had heart surgery, had a valve replacement, and he had a negative reaction to anesthesia, so they had to re-operate on him. So he was picking him up today at the hospital. But anyway, the plant's running well. Hope I didn't jinx it now. Okay. Old business. I did review the tank, and the only big question I had, the quote, request for quote, was the pipe, the main pipe underneath Gallup Hill. And I did mention that, I asked the question, do we really need to tear up the road? Can we just leave that in place? Because it is all blanked off, it's part of the quote. And then you saw the comment from, let me go back to that. There was a comment from Ray on that. You may have missed it at the bottom. Gail's very tank has finalized the plans, received one comment from the commission and incorporated into the plans. I have no idea what he incorporated.
Okay, what I did, I'm here. I can't get on the computer, they didn't send me the link, so I'm just, I'm on the phone.
Okay, good.
So we, we looked at your request about not digging up the road and stuff, but there's a T there that we don't know, doesn't have a valve on it. We don't know where it goes, so we're just, we're gonna have to cut that section out and put a new piece of pipe in.
Right.
So we did make a couple changes for a shutdown and stuff on that. And I have the package. So I'm gonna send it up to the town planner, so they can, I'll send everything up in Word, and if they have to change anything or whatever you wanna do. They can take care of that, because we're just giving the whole package, plus the plans.
Okay, good, Ray, thanks. That's where it goes, and you know, and she'll, she'll put it out for bid.
All right, now do you want us to, I put it on the WPCA, I didn't know if it was that or the highway to, you know, the highway, is it under the town or you guys?
No, it's under WPCA. Because that's our, that's our property. I mean, we're gonna, once we get that all cleaned up, we're gonna most likely give it to the town. That's what we normally do.
Okay, all right, we'll get that up there and, but do whatever, and if you want us to inspect it or whatever, you can let us know, we can give a price on that too.
Yep, oh yes, yeah, that has to be done. That should be part of it, because we, I don't trust anybody but you guys. Okay.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Okay, I don't have any other old business, but I do have new business. So, a request for quote. So a, a request for quote was sent to Liz last week for an engineering study for sewer line from Ledge Center to um, the Highlands. And I've asked her that we want to explore all options. Not just a pipeline. We could do pump, we could do store and pump. There's all sorts of options. There's probably alternate routes rather than a pressurized line. So I included Steve on that and we are uh, gonna proceed with this. I also asked her if she needed some monies to even write up the R F Q. It's always dangerous because a, an engineering firm that writes up the R F Q might tilt that to their bid, but we'll, I think we're smart enough to manage that. The next discussion, if there's no other discussion on that, Liz hasn't responded. Some, I've asked, I've sick Steve on her to get that moving. The reason for that is we did make a promise to Peter Gardner in the development legend center that we would pursue this. So we, it's not just us wanting to do it. But the next one is the rate increase. We still have, we're faced with a rate increase. And I believe, Ray, it's in October, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So I need to know how to proceed on this commission is, because I'm not sure in this pandemic how we're gonna do this. I mean, do we have a, a Webex public hearing? And invite the public to join in? You know, there's not, the ground rules are pretty set in terms of what we've done in the past. We have a public hearing and we take that information and feedback and then we, then we vote on this.
And I'm pretty sure the town council has been legally conducting their public meetings virtually.
Okay.
We've had two Z B A public hearings on, on uh, Z B A issues waivers. So that's, we did them on Webex.
Okay, so the town can set that up. I'll ask Roxanne. But I have the previous rationale, you guys, I can resend that to you, but there was a rationale for that. And it's mainly because Groton Utilities is increasing their raw water cost. And if they're proceeding in October, you know, we need to do this in the next few months. We're doing okay in the budget, but we, we, I don't think we can absorb that for too long. Okay.
So had said that the, I'm sorry, you had said that the, um, the number of delinquent payments was, was going up, right? So we should probably definitely warn people if the rates are gonna raise, I, I would think. Cause that, that might only exacerbate the, the payment issue.
Yeah, I don't know. I guess you're right. So what we may want to do is, is in their mailouts for the billing is to put a message, Tina can do this, is to put a message that we will be having public hearings for a rate increase this year of three and a half percent. So that's a good idea. I, I, we can do that. So then they get a bill, they'll be looking at it saying, oh, there's gonna be a rate increase. And then we will publish, we obviously have to publish in a day. And there's some other requirements to publish when, when the public hearing is gonna take place. So yeah, that's a good idea. We can do that actually in next month's billing. I don't, it's too late for this one, but I think next month we can do it.
Ray, I mean, Ed, this three point five percent is our, our increase of our raw water.
Yes.
So that's not the increase that we would necessarily have to charge.
Uh, no, actually, remember, I have to, I have to resend that.
We had a long discussion about this, so that's why I just asked.
Right. No, I'm sorry. The three and a half percent is overall. It's what the impact is. Uh, I'm, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to go back into a, I, I have that. I've saved that rationale. I'll, I'll bring that and resubmit it to you.
This is, this is the total.
Yes.
Not, not the, not just for the raw water.
No, it's not just for the raw water. It's the total. It's what we have to face. Uh, part of that is some of the unbudgeted leak tests and some other things we've done. Um, it requires that increase. But I have to revive that, uh, because during the public hearing, we have to present our rationale of why and show, and actually sell the numbers. So all right, so, uh, and, and remember, this is gonna be every year because Groton Utilities is raising their rate for the next three years. And so we looked at it and said, oh, we could probably do three and a half percent each year. This is, this has been presented to the town council finance committee. And they have, they are aware of this and have given tacit approval to proceed with it. So the town council is aware of it. They're not only aware of it, but they've said, okay, there's no other choice. This is what you have to do. So we're not acting independently. Town council is aware of it and will make sure that they're really aware of it when we actually go through it. Cause they're the ones that are gonna get the complaints. Yes. All right. Is there any other discussion on rate increase? If not, uh, I will, will make a motion to approve the payment of Groton Utilities invoice one eight eight five six in the amount of three hundred ninety one dollars and sixty seven cents for diversion permits.
Second.
Okay. The discussion here is that this is from the state. And we're sharing this with, um, looks like Mountville and Groton. So this is our share of the bill. Yeah, okay. So that's for, so that's for the diversion permits. I think that's, Ray, is that an annual thing?
Yeah, there's two diversion permits. So each one is annual.
Okay. And so that's our shares. It is at three hundred and ninety one dollars and sixty seven cents. It's in the budget. There's no other discussion. Uh, I will entertain a vote. All those uh, in favor of approving the invoice, one eight eight six, one eight eight five six for three hundred ninety one dollars and sixty seven cents, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstains? Okay, it's unanimous. Now, the next motion is an error. It's actually a hundred and thirty three dollars and fifty one cents. I don't know why they put fifty two, but I'm looking at it right now and it says right on the invoice hundred and thirty three fifty one.
So the motion with the correct amount.
Yes, make the motion for the correct amount. I'll, I'll entertain a motion for, uh, I'll make the motion to approve the payment of Groton Utilities invoice one eight 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 seven, the amount of a hundred and thirty three fifty one. Uh, and these are for meters. Okay, second. Now, Ray, I, I thought it was meters. I only see meters here. I don't see any electrical work.
This one here for the E coder is, uh, it's for Fox Run, that meter pit that, uh, we've been talking about for years, that six inch meter is, is shot pretty much. We're trying to revive it through massaging it, but you got three different, you got a Hershey meter, you got a part for Neptune, you got parts for Rockville, Rockwell. So we put this new two inch on because the two inch wasn't working. The six, the, the meter itself has, should be changed out, but that meter itself is eighteen thousand dollars. Wow. And that, that feeds all Fox Run. So if he does high flow hydrants, I don't know if you get, we can't test it because none of our valves work in the pit uh, anyplace else. So, uh, you could be losing water through there. Uh, we've talked about it for, you know, many years, but it might be a budget item for next year at least. Uh, you want to think about getting that changed for the revenue part of it.
Okay, so let me understand. Is this the one that has the, both the sixes and the two inch or is it?
Right, yeah, yeah, it is. And we just, we've replaced the top part of it, the two inch, because it, uh, that one didn't work at all.
Um, and they only use the two inch because they don't have sprinkler systems in that system, in that, in those, right?
Well, they have hydrants. So when they use hydrants and stuff, uh, you know, that's all their hydrants, uh, on that. And when they flush it and stuff like that, he's not paying for it probably.
Oh, great.
I don't know the percentage of how much that meter works.
So what would be the replacement? Both the six and the two or one?
The six and two is a combined meter. It has two different chambers, one to take the low and one takes the high.
Oh, that's nice. And you don't have to worry about all the pelving. Yeah, we should, we should, uh, we should, I mean, that's a capital, I would think, but we should budget for that for next year. Okay. All right.
When we find out the surplus from last year, we could pay for it this year.
Based on the numbers I've seen, Sharon, we have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in surplus. So yeah, we should be able to pay for it this year. Uh, Ray, maybe we'll be doing this this year. All right, uh, okay. I'm, I'm making a note of that. So all those, uh, so if there's any more discussion on this, we'll go for a vote and all those in favor of approving the invoice one eight 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 seven for a hundred and thirty three fifty one, signify by saying aye. And any ayes? Uh, abstentions? Okay, so it's approved for, so is there any other new business?
Could I just, could I ask Ray to go back over and talk about, he wasn't here when we went over the ops report and just talk about the status of all the leaks?
Uh, I can bring that up. You want, you're, let me, let me, go ahead.
All the hydrants have been repaired. Most of them were, we had to retighten them or re, uh, work them a little more, but we, and we went back and leak checked them. So those have all been repaired. Now, the one that's on Lorenz and, uh, center, it looks like it's in the middle of the T. And it looks like it's on the twelve inch main line. So, uh, we're working on a plan now to we would have to shut that main line off. So we're trying to figure out how and get some more fire hose to run from hydrant to hydrant. So you still can feed customers from the tank. We'll fill the tank up, dig down, see what the problem is, if it's a gasket or something, and try to fix it while we're all, we can't run our pump station. So we're trying to come up with a plan with that. Plus, we're working with the state. We got a, a D O T permit to dig up the roads. So that's the biggest one there.
So that's the ten thousand gallons per day?
Yeah, yep, yep. We've been up there a couple of times trying to figure out, uh, because with the pressure, the pressure's over a hundred pounds in that area. Uh, we're gonna have to go up another valve, which is another five hundred feet to another hydrant. Trying to connect all the hoses together.
Wow.
I was just hoping it was a loose nut, but I, I don't think so.
Yeah, so that's what, a warped flange or something?
Well, it's either, if it's in the middle of the T, uh, usually the Ts don't go. It's usually the gasket. So I don't know if we have enough room to put a, uh, repair clamp on it until we dig everything up. Uh, we have parts at the shop, so we're just trying to figure out the, with the schools in session and stuff and, and we looked at your water flow. If we pump up the tank, we'll get a good days out of the tank long there's nothing happening, but we'll have hoses in case we do have to run the station.
I see.
Just trying to get all the pieces and parts together.
So there must be some real green vegetation and trees around there.
Yeah, it's a little, little mushy, mushy in our side. It's on the side of our roads, uh, but if we have to go out, it's still in the state right away. So, uh, it is, uh, a little mushy in that area.
All right. Well, that's a good, that's actually a bigger priority than anything else we talked about tonight.
Yeah, so we're just trying to get that ready to, to go up there and see what happens.
All right, good luck.
All the hydrant stuff are fixed. Everything's done.
Yeah, we have the list up on the screen. So there was eleven items.
Yeah.
Number seven was a flushing line, so that's service.
Yeah, he was, he just wrote it down, but we were, we flushed that line anyhow. That's for, uh,
Yeah.
Yeah, gems.
All right, good. So Terry, does that answer your question?
Thank you.
All right, good. All right, uh, there's no other further business. I entertain a all right, so moved. Thank you, everyone. Have a good weekend. Okay?
You as well.
Yeah, take care.
Before you go.
Yeah?
I'm still not getting emails or anything for, I don't know if you guys have, uh, good contact info for me.
Um, you know what? Uh, I've got your email, right?
Where? I'm not sure.
Let me, hold on. Let me, let me check something here. I, I need to check. Uh, they don't give me I, I gotta go to my folder.
Chair, you're getting the notices of meetings, right?
No, I haven't, I haven't got any.
Yeah, that's probably Christina. Christina probably has to put him in the system. Cause they have your, they should have your email. She has your email. So that, uh, that's, that's a Christina issue.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send this email to Christina. I don't see. Now, that's a service agreement. I see the new appointment from Roxanne. And I have your email address is, is J E R E M N L Norris at gmail dot com. So let me, let me send this to Christina, this email and make sure you get on the, the list.
Yeah, that was, that wasn't my email.
Oh, that wasn't? There was an error in it, right? What was the email? There was an error.
So my, so my email, uh, is Jeremy R, like the letter R, Norris at gmail dot com.
Dot L?
No, R.
That's why.
That's why. Well, I thought we had that, I thought we had that fixed, but apparently not. So I will send this, I'll send this to Christina. I thought, I thought we had it fixed because, uh, Roxanne knew that there was an error. And then, but apparently Christina didn't get the, um, all right, so let me, I, I'll, I'll send her right now, tonight an email on that. Okay?
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much.
Yeah, so that, get rid of that L, Christina. All right. Good.
All right. Thanks a lot. Have a good, have a good week, guys.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, yep.
Bye.
Have a good weekend.
Yep. Yes. Okay, I needed it. That's funny. Why am I still in the meeting? Okay, let's, oh, stop. Okay, I gotta stop sharing. That's why. Here we go.